All right, thanks for coming, everybody. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thanks again for coming. We'll start with number one. Sorry, first, Chloe will not be making it tonight. We'll start with approving the agenda, number one. Any additions, deletions, or corrections this time?
Yes, so E1A, Mr. Wilco has withdrawn his actually permit application. And under F, we'll add five lease agreements. I uploaded the lease agreement for a trail free coffee at 16.
Oh, that was the str- you sent that?
Yes, yes, I got it in there and let you know it was there. And then F6, I have an update on this Upper Water Trail. So we can make a motion to go ahead and spend $154 to put your no go. I think that was from way back in February, May, July, May.
Okay, first, time. Anything else?
No.
Good, good.
Entertained a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks Lonnie, about a second.
I'll second it.
Thanks Dan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same side. Motion carries. On to number two, the consent agenda. There's no questions for staff on the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks Doug, do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks Lonnie, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same side. We don't have any visitors, put the form. On to E. Letter B there, Ron Carlson rezon request resolution. This was a planning and zoning on Monday night.
Yep, we have a recommendation from the planning commission to go ahead and approve that rezon request. There was others than Ron himself. I don't know if there's anyone else present.
Any questions for Lonnie or staff? It's pretty straightforward.
Yes, exactly.
It hasn't been a long time ago. All right, entertain a motion to approve a resolution approving a zoning map amendment for the property known as 307 Mannerville Avenue, South, Caston, Minnesota.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks Lonnie, about a second.
Second.
Thanks Doug, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same side. Motion carries. On to F1, special vehicle ordinance.
Well, this started maybe two meetings ago when we had a request to allow someone to use the golf cart without a driver's license. And the city attorney asked that we make sure that our complete special vehicle ordinance was in compliance with state statutes. So at the last meeting, I let you know, we were taking a look at the statute and had included the information from the League of Minnesota Cities as well as the state statute. And then we took the template provided by the League of Minnesota Cities. And the only thing I did was make sure that that light section, like running, being able to operate after dusk, which I think is section seven. Well, there's more than one slapping now, isn't there?
Looks like seven eight requires two head lamps, two tail lamps. That's not a major.
So it's a very, on the very first page, number seven, motorized golf carts, utility test vehicles, all terrain vehicles not equipped with headlights and taillights may only be operated undecimated roadways from sunrise to sunset. And then I added the language, the motorized golf carts would operate so manufactured and all their commercially available retrofitted headlights and taillights shall be permitted to operate on city streets. Which was an addition that had been made to that ordinance.
So at the last meeting, we were, I guess I misunderstood.
Okay.
So I don't know if I'm prepared to ask for a vote on this tonight. I mean, it appears that the state statute is clear, requires a permit. I got it. After I spoke to you this afternoon.
Okay.
I went on neighboring towns' websites and now they say they all require permits for everyone around, but doesn't. I'm inclined to recommend that we leave the ordinance like it is because no one's enforced it like it was before. State can say they require a permit all they want, but no one's ever enforced it. I just don't know what, why would we add the burden to our staff nowadays, a permit to every golf cart that comes to town? Big Iron Classic comes to town. Who's gonna run around and tell the hundred people that brought their golf carts on a Thursday night after city halls close, or close at noon, or whatever, maybe we're open full time then? All of a sudden, we have to get all them down here and we're paying staff to issue permits for somebody for a golf cart for $48.00. So.
Most of those too, not to interrupt you, but most of those are brought in as rentals, from a rental company.
Right, still require a permit to operate on the city street.
But they're brought in mostly to be on the fairgrounds.
Probably, mostly. I get that, mostly. I live in town, I see the golf carts.
Right.
Not on the fairground.
But I've been almost run over by those golf carts last year, going down the sidewalk.
I just wanna say something quick. The upside to having a permit, I was the idiot that got the city to allow four-wheelers to run in town here. And if it would've been the group that we had when we started that deal, it would've been just fine, because everybody followed the rules. The problem is, more and more decided to get four-wheelers to run in town, to go through, they were supposed to just go through town, to leave town. They didn't do that. Having a permit, they are aware of the rules, they're aware of what they can and cannot do, where they can and cannot go. Without that permit, everybody, while I see Joe Blow's got a four-wheeler, he's riding in town, so I am too. Same way with golf carts, and the golf carts are gonna get to be more and more, because my age is looking at getting golf carts and running them around town. If you have a permit, the permit requires that they come in, get the permit, they're handed a set of rules, they know all the laws, the restrictions, even if you have permits for Big Iron. Just advise the people that run Big Iron to let the people know that are registering, if you have a golf cart, you are gonna be required to have a city permit if you drive within the city limits off of the fairgrounds. I think it's a good rule to have, I really do. It would cut down on the infractions dramatically.
Plus, I've seen plenty of them being driven by kids.
Oh, yes, but there's a downside to that too, though. And it says in the state code, it's likely that it's not required to have a driver's license. But I would like to see it, if a driver is a certain age or something, as long as they're with a licensed driver, they're allowed to do that. And the only reason I say this is, you take farm kids, city kids. Farm kids have less driving infractions because they've been trained to drive for years. And if kids start out with a golf cart in town, learning the road restrictions and the rules, they're gonna be a better driver. Diane. But I really think the permit thing is a twofold plus for the city. It not necessarily brings in money. If we could just cover our costs, and it really doesn't take that much to provide a permit to somebody for a golf cart. I just see it as a plus, plus, plus.
Because that would be some probably issue to the police department.
Could be, yes.
I look at it a lot, the same thing. It's more government. You're still looking at the same people to enforce it. You send out a newsletter, have it once a year in the newsletter, the rules, the regulations of it, that you're supposed to have a driver's license, you're supposed to be insured. It'd be the same difference as when, how many accidents is there nowadays? What percentage of the people are uninsured? You gotta have a proof of insurance to go buy that license tab. But you know what, a big share of people don't have the insurance when sometimes they need it. They only buy it for a month at a time. So you can go show proof of insurance every three years, what's the odds there's gonna be any on it anyway? It's gonna be an enforcement issue anyway. I gotta say, at some point here, we've gotta give, at least give Gary a temporary permit and let him drive. He asked for this how long ago, you know?
Well, that's fine.
I would like to make a motion to keep the ordinance the way it is and give him a temporary permit. And we can chew on that as we go, how to write it up. But on an individual basis, or however it is, anyone with a medical condition that's lost their driver's license, or something to that effect.
I mean, I would agree a little bit with that, Doug, to, my idea come in, when I first heard, read through it, looked at it, I emailed Teresa and said, no, aye, that that's gonna fly as far as needing a permit. And then when I got the statute and looked at it, I just can't believe this, we can have an ordinance on our books for decades that doesn't comply with the state statute, nobody's ever said anything before. So if they're not gonna enforce it, my opinion is, we leave it like it is. If somebody can build a medical condition, we can give them a temporary, hey, you have a medical slip from your doctor saying that you're okay to do that? I'm fine with that. If we have to look at this because it's now, now we've got it on tape everywhere, everybody's gonna be looking at it, we're gonna probably have to amend our ordinance at some point. But if we pass this ordinance tonight, what's our permit process? Do we have a permit application for somebody to fill out tomorrow morning if we do this?
Well, you have the form of the permit, it's included in the ordinance. So that first section includes every application for a permit should be made on the form supplied by the city. By the time we publish this, Krista can have a form ready.
I'm just not, I'm not ready to change this as far as a whole ordinance goes. I've got some emails to some other neighboring communities to see how they actually enforce it. It's on their books, it's in their ordinances, it says that in Dodge Center and Byron specifically. You know, what are they doing to enforce it? Do they require a permit? Now they actually have an permit. I've never talked to anybody who's ever filled out a permit for a golf cart. I don't keep doing all the communities with golf carts. I've never heard that. So I guess, I'm not prepared right now to make a change to the whole ordinance as a whole, knowing that sometime in the future, we're probably gonna have our hands forced to do it. And I'd like to see us issue Mr. Dorshner, who requested a couple months ago, some kind of a temporary permit with a medical slip that he has, that he's able to ride the golf cart for the summer, and we can revisit this at a later time.
No.
That's my opinion.
So. Has anybody talked to the chief?
Nope, because it's not a, as of right now, the only thing that our police department enforces is they have to have lights on it, or they have to have a phone moving vehicle sign. That's actually the thing that's in our ordinance. As far as having to get a permit to operate it, our ordinance doesn't say they have to. And if anybody has a problem with that, it should be the State Patrol, because they're the ones that the state statute, they're the ones that would enforce that statute, and they don't. So shame on them, if they haven't done it for all those years, that's their statute to enforce, not ours. Our ordinance has this. And our police department enforces the ordinance that we currently have.
I'm just trying to figure out if we have to abide by state ordinance, or do we have?
Do we have a permit?
I know, but I mean, now that it's brought up, do we have to, is there a liability if we don't, on the city of somebody now? Bringing this brought to our attention, now that we know, is it a liability on the city if somebody is out there without a permitted golf cart, unlicensed, uninsured, causes an accident? Are we somewhat liable? I don't know.
Well, we have an ordinance that says that it's supposed to have the insurance.
Only thing they don't have is a permit.
Or a license.
We do, we say they have that.
So in our current?
The only thing that's not in our current ordinance is the buyer's permit. I'm not saying never, I'm just saying today, I'm not prepared to bring this court and change the ordinance. I'm personally gonna do some digging with smaller communities. I gotta call into the League of Minnesota Cities to find out what is our liability, whatever, you know. But, I don't know, it just, I need a permit for this, a permit for that. It's just, someday, when's your personal responsibility gonna kick in?
Nowadays? Never, sorry. We're getting to a society where nobody has to take personal, you have to think for them, and that's sad.
You said with the RVs, you know, I know I've got a Ranger, I've got a license plate on, I got a trail stick, you know, you're gonna get another permit, you know?
But you still have to have a license and a state permit, so why not have a permit for the city for a golf cart? And you admit that it's gonna have to happen somewhere down the line, so why kick it down the road? Let's do it, get it taken care of. We're clear. I'm saying, put some more thought into it about when we're gonna do it, maybe not midsummer. If we're gonna do it, we have to think about it. If it's something we're gonna have to do, do it over the winter when they have to do it, so it's not a surprise all of a sudden midsummer. And I really don't wanna challenge our police department to have to go out and stop everybody that's got a golf cart to see if they have a permit.
Yeah, and bigger and class, they just bring a lot of them to town, give some time, you know, get the word out.
I'm saying revisit it at a later time, if we have more information. Because we're not the only community that I found out that doesn't have that in their ordinances. We will eventually. Be forced to. But today, I'm saying, my opinion is that we don't change the ordinance as it is, but we would grant a medical exception to somebody who has the permit from their doctor, that slipped from their doctor's saying they're okay to drive. And revisit this later.
I'd second that.
So we are changing the ordinance? Nope.
You just.
You were adding statement to. Totally separate, the ordinance is totally separate. So let me come in and ask for an exception, we'll grant an exception. Not changing ordinance at all. That's my opinion right now, because I was not prepared for this. I want to volunteer for more regulation and more work for city hall staff. There's a lot of people that drive golf carts in town. And then add another fee to people that already pay taxes here. Again, that's my opinion, I'm just one person. That's just my opinion. Why would we add more fees to people that haven't been charged that fee, that have been driving their golf carts? And what's the difference?
I have a golf cart, I don't mind paying the fee because I'm more knowledgeable after getting the permit, getting the rules in hand. Stating that on a webpage or in the paper, what percentage of the people are really gonna read that? Very low, very, very low.
I'd.
You could throw it in with the water bill, and it still doesn't get read. Chances are, it goes in the trash can.
What's the violation if you don't have a permit? Did I miss that paragraph?
Um, yeah, that would still be the same.
Just take it.
That's currently in the ordinance. We didn't change that.
I'm willing to wait this out, you know, to get more information. I'm willing to do that. But I just think this is something that needs to happen eventually to better keep the public in knowledge. It doesn't have to be a large fee, it doesn't have to be a breaking fee, or somebody can't afford to do that.
Yeah, I agree, you don't have to have a fee at all.
Right, but it should, some type of fee. Some type of fee, it should. It's just the avalanche, it's government. There's more rules, more fees, it's more help, it all, it's just a cycle, where do we stop it? Right here. Yeah, that's never gonna happen, because government throws fees and new rules all the time. But I'm willing to wait and get more information, but I think this is something that's going to happen eventually, just to keep everybody in knowledge and keep everybody on cue. Maybe when they're doing the next 2040, or something, next couple.
I guess I would like to make a motion that we leave the ordinance as it is, but we grant Mr. Dorshner an exception for the summer with his doctors from Top Trade Golf Cart. And then we'll go to work and figure out. That would be my motion.
I'll second that motion.
Would you have a timeline of when you were gonna try to bring it back, more information, or would you just?
We'll gather some more information and bring it back in the next couple meetings.
I just, if you don't set a timeline, I don't, we'll all get busy and.
No, I'll have the information I need before the next meeting or two. I just think we need to, if it's gonna be a change to where everybody that operates these things needs to have to make a change or get a permit, I don't think the middle of June is the time to do that. For a season, we're only using them seasonally. It's not like we're Florida, where we're using them 24 hours in a 365 days a year. And if we're gonna change something for a season, it should be for a season, and not for the middle of the season. Any other discussions?
No, sir.
We have a first and a second on the floor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same side. Motion carries unanimously.
Get some more info back.
Okay, on to number two, Water Tower Committee update.
Okay, Water Tower Committee met, emailed Teresa, was our consensus that the agreement that we have in place now is for them to use it for shows, displays, anything like that. Nothing was asked when we met before for trimming, for maintenance, for any sort of thing like that. There's no reason for them to go up there and trim. We have our own employees to do that. If we allow them to go up and trim and use a waiver of some type, and somebody gets hurt, we're still liable. I think we can handle our own property and take care of it. If they really feel that they want to remove the plants, I have no issue with that, and the committee had no issue with that. But as it stands, it was agreed upon that they were supposed, that they wanted the agreement so they could do the showings. They also agreed that they were gonna have a certificate of insurance on hand. They haven't supplied that. They're delinquent, I think, one quarter or two quarters.
One quarter.
One quarter, showing the account is up to date. So they aren't following the agreement as it is right now.
Let me just ask a clarification on the certificate of insurance. That's only for when they're gonna do an event. You don't have to have insurance until you have, it's an event insurance to where, hey, I'm gonna do something on July 4th. So I go get a special insurance certificate, and I have insurance for July 4th between 8:00 and 5:00.
No.
Normally, a certificate of insurance is supplied to whoever is requesting it once a year, and it's covered for the whole year, for the events.
Uh, if they're kicked out of there like that, why would that be? Why would you have insurance on something, you can only go there, that's a five day to have an opening.
No. It's just like, at work, we have certificates of insurance from all our subs, from all our suppliers, from all our general companies that we work with, and it's a blanket coverage, that covers for the whole year, even if they do nothing for us.
Yeah, I think we're mixing some things up, because I know with, even with the city, with like the festival in the park, we have insurance for.
Yes, you have.
Indemnification things for specific events. There's a certificate we get from the insurance company that specifically covers the band and the stage and the road. It's for them one day only. It's not all year. And we only get it till the week before, and then it gets it in the silver.
See, we do gram shop for.
We can check it, we'll have, I'll have Nancy, we can check on that, right?
Yeah, we can check on it. And just like, you know, in the meantime, we're the one that carries the insurance.
Yeah, city property, we have insurance.
Special events maybe, but we'll check on it.
Right.
Certificate of insurance for a sub, of course, they're working other places, so they're insured all the time. They give you that certificate of insurance that's covered, you know, that's different. Right, but when we met the last time with them, and I mentioned that we need a certificate of insurance on hand, they had no issue with that, none whatsoever. And it wasn't stated that it was just for specific dates?
I don't know what they, yeah, and I argue, just having done event insurance, and having gotten it passed, I don't know what, if I was them, I don't know what certificate of insurance they would show you right now, because technically, it's city property, they don't have to have any insurance whatsoever, unless they're doing a specific event. And I would only pay for insurance for the event for the day or the weekend that I'm doing it. I wouldn't have any other liability, there'd be no reason for them to have liability insurance or anything for that property.
Right, for that property, they would have it on their other properties, because they own other properties, would that?
But it wouldn't cover the city property. It'd only be for the event, the date they had people there. So I might be crossing insurance worlds here, I'm not the most knowledgeable one, but all the events I've ever done, it always lists a specific date, because I'm not insuring the property. That's the city has that. So it's the event that they're in. They could not do anything for the next five years, they wouldn't need insurance.
The city would just be listed as additionally insured for their event. But it could cover a blanket for the whole year if they have several events, rather than getting a certificate of insurance. Each event, they have a blanket certificate that covers for the whole year, in case they have two this month, none the next month, three the following month. They don't have to go every time to get a certificate.
Let's look into that.
Okay.
Because if I were them, I would have like a certificate of insurance. I would pay for something that maybe I wouldn't use. Anyway, that didn't mean they're up, go ahead.
That's pretty much what I got to say.
Okay. So when are we gonna take care of the property?
Well, right now, it's a construction zone.
No, I know, but I mean, it hasn't been trimmed and hasn't been kept up because of the.
Actually, it is.
It did today.
Just in the last week, right?
Yes, we were, we thought Bernie was gonna be working there last week, and Ronnie just found out that Bernie hadn't showed up. So we were waiting for the guys to get out of the way with the restoration company, and then for Bernie to get out of the way. Turns out Bernie hadn't even been there. Ron went up today and took care of everything.
Right, I mean, it's June 13. I mean, most people with plants or flowers or grass, they've mowed it once or twice since the snow went away in mid-April. And we don't touch it for two months.
Well, we had, we're in a construction zone. We have five that didn't come back.
But, no, I'm just saying, though, it's more the principle.
Oh, there was outlaw, definitely was some not coming back.
We got, we're citizens, they get letters saying their grass is too high. We got our grasses knee-high.
It was.
I'm just saying, if we're gonna take the property, and we're gonna say, we're gonna take care of it?
Yeah.
All I'm saying is, we should take care of it.
Right.
And I'm just worried too, that we also are setting a precedent here, that we're not gonna let volunteers do any volunteer work on city property. So are we setting a precedent with that? I mean, we had volunteers willing to do something, which is great. Are we gonna tell the Women's Auxiliary from the Legion that they can't go do any of the flower stuff at the flower arrangements at the North Park, at the Veterans' Corner Park, where they take care of some of that stuff? So is this just an isolated thing, where we don't want any volunteers on this specific property? Or are we just not wanting any volunteers to do anything for this city property? That's my, I voiced that before, and I'm just voicing that again. So we don't want any volunteers, and we don't want anybody that doesn't work for the Park Department. Nobody should be going by popping heads up flowers, they should work for the Park Department. Just asking. I'm a little hungry tonight, don't.
Need a hug. There was telephone calls about this situation this week. But there's telephone calls about the old school, too. Their property isn't taken care of. I just feel that if we allow them to do this, it'll be more and more, and it will just open up the door to issues. They wanna work through Ronnie, which they did before, and they went above and beyond what they were supposed to do. And this is what they agreed upon, with the agreement. That was it. So they signed the agreement, that's the way it was. If they wanted to trim and that, why didn't they have that in the agreement? That's my point. I mean, we battled on this back and forth, and we ended with everybody shaking hands, and everybody was smiling. I just feel that they're right back at it again. They're just, little more and little more and little more. It's just gonna get out of hand. I've got a feeling that the plants that you wanted to trim, and the ones that are just hanging, that are all brown now, you know? I don't think you could've hurt that much, would you, if I'd injured?
All I'm saying is, if we have an agreement, but we should live up to our end of the agreement and take care of the property. If we're taking it over, then it should, you know, our Park Department should get the directive that, hey, this is property that needs to be taken care of properly, and take care of it. That's all I'm saying.
I agree.
So if it's an agreement, it's an agreement on both sides. We have to fulfill what we said. If we're gonna take the property in the agreement, we shook hands, we all agreed, then we should do.
We need to follow through.
We should follow through on our end, so.
Have trees contact, or have trees contact the Public Works Director or the Parks Director.
Yep.
Verify and make sure that.
I met Ronnie up there a week and a half ago. We've been in contact. I met Ronnie up there a week and a half ago when the, um, order guys were there. The restoration guys were there and he took gravel up because he thought Bernie was coming.
Okay, so Ron's aware, they're taking care of it, done with the stuff.
Absolutely, yep.
Anything else on that? Thank you for the update. Just to make sure we fulfill our end of the deal.
Yes.
Uh, F3, comprehensive plan. Um, everybody's had this. We've been working on this for the last year, a couple of months. Um, it was presented that planning and zoning at the May meeting, June meeting?
May.
May meeting, mid-May meeting.
Yep.
Um, and we all attended. I think everybody was there. I thought you were there for that part too. Um, there were a couple changes that were requested to be met, so.
So in, um, section five, there's a, there's a new 5.4, 5.5, 5.6, and then those that were already in that section have been renumbered after that. So 5.4, 5.5, and 5.6 were added after the public hearing. And then also there was a map change. Um, MinDOCH came back and, um, asked that we remove the word "other" after principal arterial and that we identified 16 as a minor collector rather than a major collector. So there were two label changes on, um, straightened out.
Yeah, from, yeah, okay. Any impact on my labeling that a minor instead of a major? Any impact on us really as a city going forward as far as trying to do something with that? Doesn't change any funding sources or?
That's what I was. Correct. We're actually making the map in line with MinDOCH's map or actually it's the federal highway classification map. So it's kind of lining goes out very trivial and we're not gonna change the federal highway classification.
Sure, okay. Right, just making sure we weren't going backwards.
Nope.
Okay, thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions? Everybody's had a chance to review it several times. Brad, I'd like to thank him and the working group for their time on that. Uh, we did have a lot of citizen input on that over the past year as well. Uh, maybe not as much as we liked it, some parts of it, but during other parts, we had pretty good engagement. So I think there's a pretty good collection here. Uh, it's a dynamic document that's gonna be changing day, day as we go forward. As the city changes, population changes, areas change, funding changes. So, um, I think it's a big step in the right direction from where we're at before. Um, and it'll give us a good guide going forward. I'll entertain a motion to approve the comprehensive plan as recommended by planning and zoning.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
I'll second it.
Continue our discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 All the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Um, F4, thank you for sitting through all this, waiting for your place, but, right. Um, F4, upholding minutes, addendums, videos to the city website. Uh, I just, I have this added for discussion. It seems we have a lot of technical difficulties or whatever it might be. And then I'd just like to make sure, I think now Rebecca is up on getting for EDA to make sure that we get the packets on there ahead of time. We, EDA always gets a email with the agenda and the packet.
Packet.
But to make sure that that's on there that Wednesday, Thursday before the meeting. Uh, because we do get people that ask what we're gonna discuss or what's gonna be on there, to make sure that gets on there. And then to make sure that the videos and minutes get uploaded afterwards. And if for some reason there's a technical difficulty, I would just like to request, so I guess you guys are, have consensus or I can't do it myself. But that if there's a technical difficulty and it's not gonna be on the website for some reason or it's gonna be delayed, if there's a way to put something in its place, I know there's one place in there that says due to technical difficulty, something after. But if we can just put something on there to say, hey, technical difficulty tonight, expect it tomorrow or Wednesday or whatever. That way people know when they see it that, it'll save us here a lot of phone calls because I got phone calls coming up, you know, hey, where's the video, what was talked about and this and that.
Even, even if there was a, you know, like you said, the phone calls, e- even if there was a quick note to the group, you know, about what the problem was, at least you got an answer.
Right.
You know, like when you couldn't get it, the stuff was, what had to be split because it all ran that time? If we just had an answer, you know, that, that helped.
Yeah, it's a quick note to everybody. That way if somebody comes and says, what was the deal with the video? Well, let me check. Or if it looks like they had problems splitting the two. That's just the way it was. And you were gone and they were trying to figure out and it's, it's all good, it's fine. But just that way we at least have an answer right away instead of trying to track down and wasting more of your time calling and saying, what's going on with the video? So if we could get just some kind of direction from us of the consensus that if you get them uploaded as soon as possible, when you do, great. If they can't be, some kind of a placeholder on there that says that and shoot a quick email to all of us. So that way when people ask us, we know what to tell them. Does that sound fair enough to everybody up here?
Mike, Mike.
Before we got off the subject then though, Coy, Coy emailed me this. You sure had one later.
Okay.
And you look at there, Coy, there's just a light that'd be installed somewhere in the room where everyone would know or someone, any of us would know if the camera's on or if it's being taped.
Is there an indicator light in the closet?
It's in there, but.
In the closet there.
That's a great place for it.
And the thing is, it's on the, it's on the monitor that's in there. If I open the door, you might be able to, and I'm not even sure how you would be able to see it. If we left the door open, there's a little green light on the bottom of the screen that shows that it's recording. But.
Great place for it.
I know. And, and I tried, I tried to get them to actually have a monitor out here, but that was a lot more money to make sure, because that was, that was a concern we had when we started this. Is to see if there was, if we could have a monitor out here to make sure that it was recording or we knew if there was a problem so we could start it again. And it was just, it was a lot more money to do that.
I know, you know, I think you said it jokingly the one time, you said, is it taped? You know, one of it. Someone said it. But at, at least, you know, someone's gonna glance at it. And I don't think that's that ridiculous of a price that it would be there somewhere here and everyone would know.
Well, I have one question. Did we get two quotes? Because that's the first thing that Coy would wanna know. If we got two quotes. If we're gonna do this, we should have two quotes and we should have more time to look at it before we even decide to do it.
I don't think you're gonna find anybody beat all systems, so. I'm, I'm just saying.
I don't, but I mean, that's.
No, I, I, you know, that's a great question. I have no idea. But on, on this situation here, it's an add-on to a system that's already there. No one else is gonna come add-on something to all systems, system. You can get all the quotes you want. But they're not gonna come, you're not gonna get Chevy to come over and pour a part on the board.
No, but it's just a light. It's not that it's on. It's pretty simple.
No, I, don't we have a dollar amount though for quotes?
Uh, I think it's under, if it's under 25 thou.
You don't have to get two.
Yeah.
So, 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 I don't know. That's, this is the first I've seen it, so.
Me too, so it'd be nice to retake tomorrow before we did any decision.
I just got an email, so I had to copy them along.
Okay, well, let's think about, let's bring it back, think about for the next meeting and then we can look at it there. I guess it's a solution. It, it probably would be a solution that we could just have a big red light sit right on the, that you would know.
Because there is time.
Even, even if it's there. Put it right over the door.
According, according to this, it has to be near the camera.
So it'd be.
Oh, it does.
But it's something that you could be able to see that all of a sudden it goes out because.
That was a concern when we first got the system and.
All right, so I think it's.
Or I could sit in the closet.
Yep.
We'll bring that to discussion in the next meeting. Like I said, I'm a little horny tonight.
I think he's volunteering.
The whole thing with the closet, yeah. Okay. Hi, number, hi, number five, uh, the lease agreement.
Does this include, we had talked about changes maybe three meetings ago. And so this has all those changes incorporated plus the actual start date, the date that they would start making rent payments based on the agreement that first three months. Would be at no rent. We agreed on a security deposit at what we anticipate to be the second year's rental amount. So those are the kinds of details that got filled in.
So these are the changes that we had talked about. They're just in, we're informed for us now.
Yeah.
There's nothing to change from that from what I, my notes that I saw.
Exactly. Yep. It incorporates everything you know plus the actual kind of details of the timeline.
Okay, um, any questions, concerns before we, from the council?
I'm good. We've had it, we've discussed it.
Doug?
No, no, I'm good.
Okay. Um, anything you'd like to add? We've got it here. We're gonna, no, we're good.
We're good. We have keys and we're gonna notarize their signatures and.
Okay. All right.
I'll make a motion that we go forward with this lease as written.
I'll second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries. Uh, thank you. Look forward to seeing your business grow and prosper in Kason. Um, I know you were into EDA last week and we approved the improvement loan there for you to help get the floor sealed up to food standard like you need to. So look forward to seeing the, the progress there. And as I park in the parking lot, some fresh roasted coffee everywhere. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
I did ask them to just hang around to the end so we could notarize their signatures.
Um, and I look forward to seeing your business grow. Look forward to seeing you outgrow the building and have some plans up later.
Thanks for your support.
All right, F6, update on the amount for Zempro Water. We were just waiting on them to get back to us with the amount.
Yes, $154. So if you're, I know we talked $150 when they were here. It came up to $154 based on the 16 communities that, um, agreed to participate. So I just need a motion to approve the payment of $154 towards the Greater Minnesota Regional Parks and Trails Commission application consultant.
And this is just, just an application.
It's just the application and no.
Okay. I just wanted to verify that again.
Yeah, all it's for is the application.
I forget stuff, so it's easy to ask.
I'll make that motion for $154.
Thanks, Doug. Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries, Linda, unanimously. Um, I have this mayor's report. I left a few things I had on my desk at the office. Uh, one, I'll be at, uh, there's a flag raising ceremony tomorrow at the old school, so I'll be attending that. Yes, I attend that. Um, summer reading program was at the library board meeting last night. Just updated on that. It's a big event that goes on in the community every year. Uh, they had 460 people there for their event. They got over 500, it's almost 600 people signed up for the summer reading program. So again, it's bigger than it was last year and, um, they're doing a good job working with libraries. So create a lot of buzz and tell them, or put the people that are there. It was a good turnout that night. Yep. Um, and I'd also just like to thank the city. You know, we've had a tough situation in our police department recently. And I'd like to just commend the city staff, council, um, that we respected somebody's privacy through this whole thing. The media did what they did. Uh, that's on them. But I, I did appreciate that, uh, names and details and that type of thing didn't come from anybody at the city. So I do appreciate that. And our thoughts and prayers are what they're involved. Um, but we should respect people's privacy. Just because they work for a public entity doesn't mean that we can use the newspaper with, uh, details. So I do appreciate that from the city. Nothing came from the city. Um, and then we'll go on to J, engineer's report.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Council. I think one quick one tonight. Uh, in your council packet is real south fork ionized repair letter. Uh, this is a letter making some requests for some repairs, uh, in the south fork subdivision. Uh, hopefully asking for your review and comment tonight. Uh, this is an item we previously discussed. I think it, uh, discussed, uh, years past even. Uh, this area allows a significant amount of ionized rain and groundwater getting in our sanitary sewer system that we don't necessarily want in our sanitary sewer system. Uh, so you asked me to provide a evaluation on that system. So we did, uh, I'll do a kind of a, a light evaluation on the system. Uh, we did some smoke tests and we put smoke in the sewer to see where things are leaking. Uh, we looked into some manholes, found some leaking manholes, some services, et cetera. Uh, we did not actually camera the, the main lines themselves. Uh, that gets to be a little more labor intensive and more expensive, so we did not, uh, complete that. Thinking that was probably the best bang for our buck here. Uh, we ultimately did, did develop, uh, the attachments to the letter, which is a list of deficiencies that the letter is asking the developer to correct. Um, I think this is definitely gonna be an improvement to the ionized situation that, again, the amount of rain and groundwater getting into that sanitary sewer system. Uh, it may not solve it all, but we're to the point that we wanna try this first. Uh, this is kind of the, the low hanging fruit, the most cost effective, uh, things that we found. Uh, try this first, reevaluate, see how much, uh, is coming out at the end of the pipe, if you will, after this is, uh, hopefully completed here in a timely manner by the developer. So that's what the letter is requesting. Um, so with that said, uh, there were, we didn't kind of take a hard line in the letter here with the developer. Uh, they said they are receptive of, uh, completing this work and they do appreciate the previous work the city teamed up with, uh, with the paving and the assessment, uh, that was complete out there some years ago. But, uh, that was mentioned, uh, from the developer's side that he did appreciate that. Um, and it said that they're interested in completing this work and getting it done in a timely manner. So again, there's no real teeth in here. We haven't really threatened that. We're gonna come in and maybe do it ourselves and charge you anyway and, and go that route. So that's the tone I took in the letter when we wrote it. So with that said, the, the system would still remain private, uh, system. We're just noting deficiencies for the developer to repair and asking them to repair that. So, uh, again, the, the fixes are pretty simple and they're kind of more of the low hanging fruit, uh, for the developer to fix them. And that's the way I proposed it. I'd have you answer any questions you may have.
Well, I think just reading through it, it looked like it would be the best interest of them too to do it. I mean, just, they know they got a problem.
Yeah, and houses are selling out there, so I mean, they're in a better financial situation than they were.
But it would help everybody.
Yeah, now's the time. Um, the other thing, and I, and I did mention the developer, I said, you know, we could stop issuing building permits out here. You have another phase of construction that we could hold up. Uh, we need to, we need to get going. We need to poke the bear a little bit here and get this enrolling. And they understand that, but I don't think we're to that point yet that are not recommending that agreement, also. Um, so again, this is the letter that we have, the, the kind of the best bang for our buck here to try to cut down on some of this ionizing. We didn't find, uh, I was smoking gun or, you know, a drain tunnel and it's just gushing water. We never, I've never found in my career all that time, so.
Are, are we.
Sometimes we think that we do what we, it's really tough to find. It's kind of death by a thousand cuts or drops in the buckets, literally in this case, in the sewers, so.
Are you gonna document, document some full meter stuff on high, uh, big rain situations or something for a few days and kind of, can we get it drift where we're at after it's done?
We haven't. Once we get this done, we'll open up the manhole at the end and we'll be able to tell. Um, if you were out there looking at this manholes, you, you'd see, uh, some areas are typical sewer, you know, not a lot of clear groundwater flowing. Looks like typical sewer and in some manholes, all of a sudden, there's a significant amount of water that was added between the manholes. So you can tell on the small of the system, there's not a lot of, well, there's no other contributing areas at the end of the pipe. So we'll be able to tell once we, once we make these fixes and see where we're at.
We, we won't have a gallon inch though.
Uh, no, we have not.
Ever since that time, one of your guys said they thought there was a forest name. I thought it was kind of unbelievable. There was that much water coming in there, you know? So that must've been a big rainy event, you know, where everything was saturated. That just hit me, you know, when they thought that there was that much.
Yeah, there's, there's a significant amount of rain out there, reaching into the system.
That's a lot of waters.
Definitely is. Um, and it, and again, we, we didn't do a full evaluation, so not say that there, this might help. It's gonna help. It's gonna make a real significant improvement. We think it is, but it might not. We might be circling the wagons here and, and looking at this thing next spring too. One of those things.
It's a start.
Yeah, this is, this is the starting point again, the low hanging fruit, uh, needs to be done regardless. Uh, if we find more, then we'll find more in the future if we feel we need to, so.
Well, no, I've talked to Charlie about it and he said, so this spot's, you know, it's running like a garden hose and more, you know, a lot of, you know, spots.
Yep, a couple of those manholes that, that.
Significant water, so.
Do you need, uh, action from us on that?
I guess I would request you to provide any other comments on the motion to approve us sending the letter.
Any other questions for, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Next, Doug, you have a second?
I'll say it.
Ronnie, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 All the same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brad. Appreciate it. I just wanna jump back up to mayor's report. The one thing I did forget was I wasn't able to make the city picnic yesterday. But just to recognize the three people that have 30 years of service, Todd, Ron, and Kent. So just to congratulate them for, for 30 years of service.
Really good title.
Um, personnel, wastewater.
Operator two.
Operator two.
So this is the position that you did approve, um, starting that position at step one. Um, the individual that we've offered the position to has asked that, um, you start at step three. I did repost the position for an additional week to see what kind of response I would get. I did not get, uh, any responses from folks who would need, uh, um, position description, the minimum requirement for the wastewater operator two. Um, so.
Which difference?
Uh, I, let's see. So it, it would be, we offered. So, it, it would be, we offered him one T three fifty-nine, um, step three would be twenty-five fifteen, uh, an annual difference of three thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars.
What was the current person that they're at?
As a step three. So we are budgeted.
Yeah, we're budgeted for that, I just have an opinion on it, being on the personnel committee and going through the interviews and that type of thing. I'm inclined to say our offer is still step one, that's just my, I'm sharing my opinion with you. The person that was there at step three had many years of experience at our wastewater treatment plant, knew our system, was at step three already. This person's coming in, they can start at step one, as they get familiar with our plant, they'll move to step two, three, as they progress through.
You can probably, pretty fast, considering.
Yeah, I, so I, my recommendation or my opinion is, everybody else can state their opinion, my opinion is, our offer is our offer and we can repost that. I, I go back, I, that's all I can say.
So, does this guy have some experience?
Oh, he has the license plate that we were requiring.
How much, how many years of experience?
Oh, ten years.
Zero at this plant?
Right, but I guess any plant would be, would be nice to know.
He worked for People Services.
Oh, okay.
Previously. He had ten years of experience at People Services, and he has just about three years of experience at his department.
What's, what's the pay for step two?
It's right in the screen there.
Where is that?
Actually, I do have that because I did the calculation for it, twenty-four ninety-seven.
I don't know, I think we have a pretty good offer, myself. It's a personnel issue or, you know, a lot of things, but I, I think from where he's coming from to where he's going to with the opportunity that, that somebody would have here compared to where you're at, I think this is a pretty doggone, good offer to start. That's just my opinion, again, I'll, I'll be quiet, I'm done.
Don't forget the benefit package, you know, the hourly amount is a small piece of it.
What, what does Charlie say?
I talked to Charlie.
Yeah.
Charlie said, "Step one."
Okay, okay, then that's all we need to know.
Charlie says step one, I have no issue with that, because he's super...
He's the one that would know exactly what he needs on there.
I don't know how much, you know, like Charlie said, if we're gonna just move somebody up two steps, why not move the guy who left for Rochester two steps and keep him here?
Right.
You know, I mean, if we're gonna start negotiating that way, we have a scale, this is what's offered when you first come in, step one. As you, you have some experience here, you get your extra steps. And you don't want to be grudging with them, that's, if they're here and they earn that, that's what they earn, but I think it's kind of, um, step one is appropriate in this case. And it'd be appropriate for anybody else coming in the same thing, and, and he can ask. I don't blame the guy for asking, he can ask for whatever he wants. I'm, I'm just, I'm gonna make the motion that we make the offer at step one.
I'll second that.
Keep that. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same side. Thank you. Um, nothing from the attorney tonight, correspondence was all in your packet, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting adjourned, thank you for coming, everybody, thank you for putting up with...
We enjoyed it, so why did you change for the rest?
I, they're gonna come to talk to me.
They have to sign the agreement.
We were holding them over the bar.
Yeah, they didn't, they didn't have a choice.
Not entertaining.
Yeah, that's what we strive for, just ask Brandon, he's always smiling at me.